Ah, okay, um, so departments pretty much everything's still the same couple of new people join different departments. So for LEO DPS police issues relating to like police, you still contact uh deputy chief, well not deputy chief McAllister one on one, but also two cops and lieutenant Ezra has been added to them. So FMJ and two cops have been added to that department as well. So you can contact one of those three people for police issues. Criminal stuff, it's still Steve and Gary, but Mike Jones here is also joined. So if you have criminal complaints and stuff like that, you can message him. Uh, we'll probably make a gang kind of department to kind of help with like the gangs and getting like gang rules and things like that fleshed out. Uh, but just really haven't really had the need to do that yet. EMS and fire is right now just Roxy or Zombie. Um, so we only got one there and then like civilian things. We only have one person as well, and that's Tim Lou or not Terrence. Um, that's pretty much the departments are pretty much still the same. Um, just had a couple more people add to different departments because right now it's really a crim versus police and have like a balancing issue and we're trying to fix that balancing issue between each department. So that way one side doesn't feel more of a W mentality than the other one, you know, we're trying to keep it all even. Sort of thing, kind of fix a lot of the issues we had that we talked about last time, not really happening anymore. As far as I'm aware, a lot of that stuff's been kind of fixed and hasn't been too, too much issues, you know, it's been all kind of reworked and balanced and stuff like that. Um, if I'm wrong, we'll figure that out after this. So we're just going to kind of run through this. Um, vehicle handling SASS dealership. So this is, this is Charles department. Um, he, you want to take it over?
Uh, I don't know entirely what you want me to talk about.
So like my thing is like vehicles that are like in city already that are in dealerships, like they're able to go on the server and able to be used.
Yeah, I don't know why people are going around telling others they can't use certain vehicles. I add every single vehicle to the server by hand after writing each like line. Some of them were mass added through uh PDM and that kind of got mixed up because we had shit get reset and then shit move over. Some of them weren't supposed to be in there, but every vehicle that's in PDM right now is able to be bought and used. Vehicle eventually the base game cars are going to be set to a certain class like they'll uh handle just like our regular or not regular, but our import cars. That we don't have any way to tune base game cars right now. Every way I've tried just doesn't work for us. But eventually they will be tuned to a certain class. Um, yeah, we're, they can be used for racing. Once we get all the classes added, we'll have racing and then the boost, you won't just be boosting base game cars. You'll be boosting some uh imported cars as well. Currently I'm starting to work on B-class cars. Uh, I just got them set up this morning so that all I have to do is tune and bring over to the main server. They're all added to the dev server currently, but it's good.
There is a channel for vehicle handling lines that are messed up and things like that, that um, I think Mike Jones made.
Yeah, um, for that, it's mostly going to be, if you notice that a vehicle rolls, that's going to be the most common problem. Whether it be going around corners or um, like slight bumps, set it to roll. That's going to be probably the most common that got overlooked during the tuning process is that once you hit a small bump, it fucking starts to roll that way. Uh, report that kind of stuff. If a car is going like way too fast, report that. Anything right now, what's in the server, most of what we have should be going over like 150 and 150 is like there are only a few cars that should be going that fast anyway. And there's another thing I was going to say, but I forgot.
I think of it later.
Just to, just to clarify, since there are GTA mechanics that are involved, that just can't be written away. It's 150, is that a flat, straight line road like a highway or is that with bumps through the city?
So the fastest place in the server, like the fastest place you're going to get to catch speed is on the highway going past Casino into Legion Square. I don't care what the speed is there. Because that is going to be the fastest place in the server. I tune them for the bridge going to uh, what do you call it? KO? Yeah, because that's the longest flat straight we have. Obviously with bumps, you're gonna get a higher speed and if something's, you know, going way over with, you know, severe bump, then tell me like, but shit like that isn't isn't going to be super common. I kind of account for how a car is going to handle on that straight away as well, but.
Uh, happy, I'll bring you up here. Um, I'll do this afterwards, but we're gonna have like a small group here. So it shouldn't be too long of a meeting and stuff like that.
One more thing, uh, if you notice uh, with adding more vehicles, one of the things that's going to happen is that mod kits are going to break, which means you can't put modifications on your car. The easiest way to tell if it's broken is when you go to wheels, they'll all say like sport one, sport two, sport three, sport four. They'll say that and when you try to select them or like hover over them, it won't do anything. If you see that, report the car to me and I'll fix it.
All right, uh, happy, I'm going to jump here. Um, try to keep it too short. No, let's not talk too, too long.
Alright, so vehicle tuning, you said tune to the bridge. Uh, police cars going 200 or 200 plus. Uh, is that intentional or a side effect?
What cars are going? Police cars are going 200 plus.
I know uh, cops, uh, walkers Mustang can hit 200 from riding.
So heat units are not supposed to be out right now. Yes, they're out the other day. I don't know why, but heat's not really a thing right now. Um, I get there was like issues with like, do police patrol vehicles having some problems. So we just put out heat that night. But heat's not set up yet. So any heat related issues with police cars, that's not really supposed to be a thing right now.
Okay, so if I get this right, police cars should still be in the 150 range while heat units are just a side effect of not being set up yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the, the police fact that I tuned and put out uh, there's some P-class cars because uh, people are going to be using uh, modified C-class, which are gonna top out around P-class, so.
Okay, well, that, that was just to clear my confusion on that.
Alright, oh, we'll get.
Looks like Nova is there and uh.
Yep, getting Nova up next time.
What'd I do, man? How you doing today? So um, I wanted to ask a question about drug dealing. Uh, in character, I found out right now it's only just marijuana like weed. I wanted to know if uh, what the, the, you know, progress of getting more.
So the, the drug stuff is on the to-do list. Um, this is not currently there. It will be there at some point, but there's just a lot we're working on right now.
Thank you, that was it.
Alright, um, so kind of segue into the whole beta progression then with the, the drug related question. Um, there is a lot of stuff still lacking as we're trying to optimize certain scripts and starting to get stuff back. The beta, yes, we've been pretty much doing it for almost a month now, but with the reset back to QB core from Q box, it pretty much restarted the beta. So we had to rewrite everything we did previously for the most part. And that's why certain scripts had some problems and stuff still, but we're still working on fixing that and there's a lot of issues with clothing and things like that, which Salsa's been really working on it and trying to get it all fixed and better optimized for the player base on how we use those things. Um, still some issues with it, but everything's still being worked on. We're in a beta, so there's going to be a lot of stuff lacking. New stuff will be added. It's going to break stuff. So we're going to have to kind of fix it. We're trying to make it where before we move on to other things, everything currently that's broken or kind of missing is fixed before we start adding more to the server. And then when we add more, we're not going to do anything else until all that is fixed and optimized because we don't want to keep just have a broken product. We want to make sure the product is all working before we move on to the next thing. Um, a lot of the new scripts we're getting right now is to fix a lot of the issues that people might be having and just kind of more or less make it a better personalized for you. That's why I like the HUD, you can customize. The notifications got pushed over, so you can customize the HUD with uh, slash like notify settings and things like that. We're trying to make it where you can customize stuff on your end and make it where it fits your monitor and all that stuff. Cause everybody's playing on different resolutions, different screens and all that stuff. So we're trying to get more scripts that allow you guys to use more customization. Um, HUD, we bought a HUD one, but it's not for QB core. So we're waiting for that update, but eventually the HUD will be more customized. So a lot of the weird overlay or map not lining up right because of a different monitor. Hopefully all that will be fixed as soon as we get the update for the HUD. So I mean, there's a lot of inconveniences, especially like people are joining that were the whole wipe. I get the wipe didn't fully go through. I understand there's some bank accounts, people had personal and savings and all that stuff. I can't wipe those. So like, it's just whatever. People had savings accounts, you kept your money. Everybody else got reset, but everybody got reset with their main account back to normal. Not a lot of people did the savings account from what I was aware, so it wasn't too big of an issue. Um, money is still any, anyway broken in the server already as it is. But as you notice, people tried coming back in and they wouldn't have their characters. A lot of people's characters are missing and this was like a licensing issue. Um, because Q box want to do like licensing two and but the license two was the same as license one, just with a two. So as you guys are made the reports, tickets, we got you fixed. All we had to do was just get your new license number and add it to your characters. Wish some of, we were able to get to you before, like you made a new character were deleted because that does cause issues where you will lose certain stuff. But for the most part, a lot of it's getting knocked out. Like we pushed over a beta and I heard a lot of complaints that went out the beta, the, the recent update, the, the hot fix that was out Thursday or Friday. I don't know, but like her, like everybody's like, oh, this is all broken. It's broken, it's broken. But as soon as Salsa woke up that night, she went to work and she got it all fixed like as updates come to the server, things are going to break. But like immediately like you're going to notice that things are going to get fixed. It's not just going to be broken forever. Um, just, it may work on the dev server when we get it all working. But it's only one or two people really testing it. So we really don't get to test things until we push it to all you guys. Um, so as you keep doing the report issues, Salsa and I will just knock them out and the other dev team as well will be there to help knock out issues, get stuff set up. Pretty much in on the whole beta progression. Like I know the, the drugs is an issue, things like that, that'll be coming. Um, like I said, uh, next time we're really going to try to wait till afterwards to ask all the questions while bringing you up here happy though.
Oh, my bad. Uh, but I know with the uh, updates and stuff, I but for home break-ins, I know there's, there's one spot that doesn't spit you out of the house immediately, but is there any uh, way to? I'll wait for the question. It, it lost me.
Um, well.
Yeah, the, the question.
Okay. Well, the issue you're, I didn't, I'm not aware that there's a house break-in that doesn't spit you out. I've not seen that report.
I, I, I put that as a video in the report issues, but um, in terms of the payout, it's balanced, but is there a way to add other spots to search in the houses?
Probably there is, um, but that's come later on when everything is like added and working, we can come back and optimize the different scripts and balance stuff out.
That, that's kind of along the lines I was thinking. Alright, thank you.
Alright, uh, so salty chat is on the dev server. Um, I posted about it in the, the salty team speak little suggestions thing. How to kind of do that. Uh, if you guys want to go in there and test it out, mine kind of walk you through and help you with the, the salty setup and things like that and to show you kind of how it is in city and we can just kind of test it. Um, I know we said we're going to do a voting, the voting is still going to be there, but I want people to know what salty chat is before we vote on it. I want people to understand how like good this is going to be for the server and how it's going to improve so much. So more or less that's why it's one of those things that's going to happen, but it's not permanent. So it's on the dev server. I posted kind of a video for introductory. Uh, the initial setup, you might have a little bit of problems. You'll see in the video, updated team speak had some issues, but I was able to work all through it through the video and get it all set up and going. Uh, once you get the initial setup done, you're not going to have to mess with me anymore. So like I said, you'll be able to test it out. I can walk you through it, kind of help you with the whole salty chat thing before we move it to the server. But I'm not worried about moving salty to the server until we get more of the current stuff fixed. Uh, I want it to be kind of tested on the dev server for a little bit and let people kind of join and see what it is. So we kind of get used to salty. Other than that, I have nothing else for you guys. I was going to do a quick little rundown meeting. So now we can open the floor up to people, ask questions and stuff like that. Um, so not too many people in here, so we're going to have to keep it super short, like I want to do with the two minute thing. It's just some of these meetings when we have a lot of people in here and it's the same person over and over again, we're seeing two, three, four people just coming up here constantly and asking the same questions and going on a big ramble spill. It makes these meetings go on and on and on. And we're trying to make where these are not like three hour things.
Uh, loner had a question in general chat real quick. Uh, are cop cars selectable to a C and B and so on while and chase so that uh, they even are close to what they're chasing like in other servers?
You can't magic, you, you can't magically switch your car between.
Yeah, we, we have no toggle switch.
Yeah, that's insanely unrealistic. That's something I absolutely hate on other servers.
Yes, I hate the toggle switch.
If you get, if you're getting outrun, call a different car.
It's why uh, cops have numbers. Have a couple cops stay on the crim while the other guy goes and grabs a faster car to take lead or whatever.
Also, if you get uh, run by somebody, you can always, you know, try to track down the car, run their plates.
Play flipper, so we can't do that.
Alright, Peaches.
Thank you, cops.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say, A, thank you guys for the way that you guys handled uh, my situation the other day. I really respected that from you guys. Second, I just had a question about locals in particular. Um, they've been assholes lately. Like they, like every police chase I've gotten into uh, recently is like locals are crashing out PD. Like instantly and I'm losing them beyond easily because of that essentially.
Yeah, uh, local traffic, we don't have any powers over. We don't control what the locals do.
Can you make them like pass a driving test or something? Cause it's pretty freaking bad.
There is nothing we can do about locals.
Grams, I think it was sent something the other day that was something to do with uh, different AI for locals.
We, we have an AI script on the server. At least we did on the main. I don't know if I added it back, but we do have a script that's going to make locals better. But even then it still didn't do anything like the the locals are broken and they're just going to keep getting more broken as GT updates. Cause I mean, the game is old. It's 10 years old. So like it's just things are just going to keep breaking.
Okay, that was, that was my biggest like thing is I, I watched Bud yesterday. Just, you know, come around the corner and in my eyes, he didn't hit the bike, but in his eyes, he blew up. And it was, it was pretty bad, like right as the chase re, restarted, you know? But outside of that, that's all I really had a question for.
I can actually add to that. The, with the lights and the sirens, they do get confused if you change lanes. So if you stick to one lane as a cop with your lights and sirens on, they'll move to the right or to the left of you. But if you're sitting there zooming in and out of traffic, they're going to get confused and do the same, the exact same thing and end up crashing into you.
They automatically move left and then they move right. So if you're going too fast, like you can't get past them on the left, but then they also turn into you on the right. Like it's, I don't know if it's a GTA mechanic because obviously GTA is meant to.
It's a GTA mechanic.
Yeah. So it's, I mean, at the end of the day, I don't know if there is a fix for it, but I mean, there's other things that we can talk about like on the backend that really don't concern like all of this, right? But
Yeah, yeah.
The locals are just, the locals are just difficult in and of itself because they literally are out to get the cops because of GTA. It's, that's how, that's how it seems is like that way. So it's more so working on the PD side of trying to figure out either a way for officers to work around that or have strength in numbers, but that's, obviously there's some other issues there that are like I said, behind the scenes for BD and such.
I, I can mitigate this with myself because like our police cars have dual sirens. So you can turn on both your sirens and you've used your air horn. It usually makes it where they kind of comply a little bit more. They actually get out of the way a lot faster. I've noticed. It's like, I really don't have a lot of trouble with the locals when I'm in like police pursuits and stuff like that. It's just more or less, I can't drive. That's why I fly. But yeah, it seems like if you use your dual sirens and your air horn, they seem to kind of get out of the way a little bit more.
Okay. That, that makes sense because I've played in a city with no locals and that sucked ass. I really didn't like that. Um, I like having the locals. I just hate that they turn into you every two seconds. So but I appreciate it guys and that's it for me.
Alright, uh, anybody else? Questions, comments, concerns?
Okay, there we go. Could you hear me?
Yes.
Alright guys, what's going on? Yeah, uh, real quick with what Carl Peaches said. Yeah, our last city was a nightmare because there was nobody there. It was just no NPCs. It was a shit show, hated it. Uh, my only question, like comment, it doesn't have to do really with like development of the server or anything. Oh, it kind of is, is more of like an RP question or concern. I, I would like, so I've, I love RP. I'm like, like RP heavy servers and I feel like it's constantly, especially for those that stream. I feel bad because I feel like it's always vehicle pursuit, guy gets away, vehicle pursuit, guy gets away, vehicle pursuit, guy gets away. And I feel like it's kind of like falling apart or falling away from actual RP and just being police pursuit simulator. Is there any way we can like lock that down more and also from like the crim aspect of it? Not that I want to go, go and get robbed all the time or rob people all the time, but I, I also see a lack of that. So there's not RP between like crim characters or anything like that. Really, it's all just RP between like me and the cops and then just like bullshitting at Legion. Is there any way we can like step it up as a whole unit?
I mean, that's more community and getting people on that eventually. Like when we have all the different gangs and all that stuff added to the server, like there'll be more criminal versus criminal interaction because you have the gangs that are controlling territories and they're running their own products and stuff like that and trying to control different things. So that will be more of things just right now with just the beta and like what we have currently, we really don't have that. Cause like, so like, once the whole drug selling gets added, cops will be going to like watch people selling drugs and get alerts for like, you know, people corner selling and stuff like that. But currently all we got is store robberies, uh, the smuggler run airplane robbery's been added back and been kind of tweaked a little bit. But until we get more stuff added, it's just kind of just, that's what it is. It's up to other, everybody else to kind of RP more and add more to it, but we can't force people to like do certain things.
Yeah, I mean, it just, it, it frustrates me, especially like with uh, two cops and stuff. I felt like his stream was all just him arresting rooster and it I, I don't stream or anything anymore, but if I did, I feel like people would get bored of it. And that's one thing that I think is hindering the city from growing even more is the lack of like true RP and it just messing with cops the whole time. And, and I, I feel like it, it, it gets boring for you guys as well.
So like, in my case, like I am, I'm a gang leader, I guess you can say, and like seeing some of the stuff that's been coming up lately, like there's more people that are, have been joining recently that are joining because they're joining somebody else's gang. So like the gang stuff is starting to grow slowly. But like, like, you know, like Punisher said though, it's just a matter of getting some of the extra gang stuff added. So like with that stuff getting added and then these other people joining in also like the gang stuff is, is building up, but it's just like a slowly build, a slow buildup kind of thing right now. So it's getting there. It's just a matter of time more so.
Yeah.
I vote we get, I vote we get chopped back and just let them throw a wrench into things.
Yeah, and just one, one more thing. I don't want to sound like a dick, but I feel like there's a lot of people that don't RP properly. Is there any way we can have like a little sit down chit chat and teach people how to RP? Cause the, the thing that bothers me the most is if we're like in the middle of something and they're like, oh, NVL or you know, stuff like, oh, you're power gaming, blah, 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 blah. Like just work through the role play and then talk like adults at the end.
That is a big pet peeve of everyone on.
Yeah, I believe it.
Bend the rule like, hey, stop with the, the character break. But I mean, everybody, everybody does it. There's been people on the staff that does it. I've done it. Couple times.
And not saying that like a hundred percent of the time, but like time and place, you know?
Yes, um, it's just people getting their emotions. It happens. Um, but we just kind of have to have that, hey, mute your mic if you want to get your emotions, get upset. Do what you gotta do. Um, and just RP out the best you can.
Best thing to say to that is to remind people that if you're down, you don't have to talk.
Yeah, I, I never do.
This is why I use push to talk.
Yep, exactly.
Yeah, and I, I do kind of want to piggyback off of what uh, Mike was saying uh, about your previous question. Uh, I, I think the biggest uh, issue with that is more or less population.
Yeah, for sure. The more people, the more.
Yeah, and you're going to have more interactions, of course, you know, you run into a random person on the street and you want to have a little RP thing with them. Most of the people in the server know each other or have like their little groups that they hang out with. And so as it sits right now, a lot of what there is to do, especially for content creators, because I, you know, I do stream, I'm trying to build my thing up. Is, you know, I'll go and do what jobs we do have, which is another thing that will improve it is when we are able to get more jobs and you know, for the crim side, um, locked down. Uh, of course, like Punisher said, we want to make sure everything's smooth. That way when we do add something, if it creates a problem, we know exactly what it is. And we can work on fixing it from that point. Um, but yeah, population is going to be a big thing. So as it sits right now, there's a lot of times where for the sake of a stream or clips or what have you, um, I'll get with Walker. And I'll say, you know, hey, look, do you want to chase me? Or I'll go intentionally like poke the bear a little bit. You know, just, just to have a little bit of fun. Um, I think it's, I think it's important and I've had this conversation with a few people. That even though you're a criminal and even though you're trying to create content, you want to do that. I, I kind of nerf myself in a way, like I don't, I don't run in a, I don't run on a motorcycle because it's just not fair at this point. And that helps, that helps give people like uh, Walker and the other cops a little bit more uh, content, right? The chases go on longer. There's more interaction. I mean, I, I, how many times have I been caught now? Because you know, I, I don't know how to fucking drive. So there's, there's different things that the criminals can do to help with RP.
That's, that's what I do. I mean, I, I do the same thing. All RP is if my car, well, now that the cars stall or I don't know if they do in the new beta 3.0, whatever it is now, but like cars stalling in our old city was awesome. Because it, it just adds that level of realism. And if you crash out your car, you're like, oh shit. And it, it just creates more opportunity for RP and I feel like that's lost on a lot of people.
Right. And there's a balance to it all, right? So it, both sides have to like just not be selfish. I know it's hard for us as humans.
Oh, fuck yeah, let's go dude. Um, right now we're doing a community.
Oh, fuck yeah, let's go dude. Um, right now we're doing a community town hall meeting.
Um, we talk about this person and this person. We don't bring up the problem, we just want to bitch about it.
RP, but we're discussing.
It's on both sides of the fence. If you guys can.
Questions for everything.
You know, be a little less, um, you know, needy when it comes to, or I, I'd say W mentality on crim and cop side. It's going to create content for everybody. It's going to be a fun experience. And then once we get that population. Once we get that population and once we get the new crim jobs and like, um, Mike said, you know, we get more of the gang stuff rolling. Which is going to bring in that population. Things are going to get so much better. It's just a matter of.
We've, uh, we've, we've been on this topic for a while.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I was.
I do wanna, I, I do want to mention one thing. I do want to mention one thing. There is six to eight things script wise that criminals can do, but you don't have to do what those six to eight things are. You could think outside the box. You could do whatever the hell you want to.
Yeah.
Be creative.
I was getting ready to, I was watching the time. I was watching the time. It was like, alright, I'll let Steve finish and then we're gonna cut it off. Um, so now, I mean, it's just, it's a community thing as we all work together. Um, appreciate you, your question, your time up here and stuff like that. Um, the other thing is just not even like the whole NVL or power gaming. We also got people walking up to staff or the dev team or people that know the dev team like, hey, this is broken. Or I hate this or this or that. Like that's not the place for it. If you see a staff member in server.
And say, hey, this is what's going on.
There's a channel for, for issues.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's been another like big thing that's been going on with, with the, the dev team is people just walk up in city and start complaining about things like, hey, look, we're here to RP. Like this is, this is our, our break, our time to like from developing to the RP. We don't need to know that, hey, you're having an issue or this or that. Like there's a channel. For that. But all right, we are going to move on. Get the next person up here.
Do we want to grab Jason? Nope, nevermind.
Okay.
I'm just gonna go down alone.
Okay, so in, with the gang things, I know, uh, there's a couple already starting feuds. I know there's. Uh, business that some are setting up that are doing that, uh, in terms of. Roleplay, like, like last time we mentioned the. W cop, W crim, cop versus crim stuff and that kind of got blown out. Uh. What is a general way you want someone to lose? So there's going to be a winner, there's going to be a loser. How in your way of wanting it, do you want someone to know that they lose and play that out just by the person or?
More or less the, the, the actions to me, like if you're, if your car breaks down, like, you know, it's there. Don't be like taking stupid jumps and things like that. Like, oh, I know the cops can't chase me in a, on a bike. So I'm just going to use a bike and just go rob places and just run from them. Kind of like that. Like you, you kind of know what the, the weaknesses and the strengths are of the police. And like, so do the cops know what the strength, the strengths and weaknesses of criminals are. Like we know what each others are. More or less is just kind of balancing that out and playing with each other's food pretty much. Cops shouldn't be ramming right away and doing all that stuff, which will have any issues with like ramming. I could get like de-sync and bubbles happen and stuff like that. But like, it's more or less just. Let, let, kind of let the cards fall into the play. Like I don't want to force people like, alright, it's your turn to lose because. This guy got away. Like we don't know that. So like, it's kind of hard to force people to be like, now you gotta lose. It's more or less just how the, the cards fall.
Yeah.
I don't know if anybody else wants to kind of add to this.
Yeah, so I can touch on this a little bit. So a couple of things with that is there's, we're never going to. Tell somebody like how to RP. Like I'm never going to say you have to do this or you have to do that. Um, I've talked about it a lot before and like a lot of people understand it. Um, it's really just respecting the roleplay and respecting somebody else's roleplay as well. Um, Rooster kind of touched on a little bit. Steve kind of touched on a little bit. Like it's really just. Taking the aspects of, of realism, let's say quote unquote, and applying it into something. So like, if you're speeding your car. And I roll up to stop you, like realistically with somebody nine times out of 10, like create a pursuit out of that? No. So like you could take that as a loss and respect the roleplay and just take a ticket or talk to us and interact and then maybe you don't get a ticket, right? Um, obviously if you're doing a bigger job or if you have more on you or whatever have you, like you're gonna run. But if you run and you go and wreck your car and then you have cops chasing you on foot and you know that all the cops are out of their cars. And they tackle you three times, maybe don't go and like jack one of the locals' cars or have your buddy come and pick you up. Like. If you do it, sure, like whatever, like I, I personally am a lot easier going and I know that it frustrates some people out there. Um, because at the end of the day, I'll be like, bro, in IRL, I wouldn't have been able to chase them. So I had my fun, right? Like, I don't really care. Either way, I'm hoping to get content out of it. Um, however. Like when it comes down to it, like again, I'm not going to tell you, you can't go and do this, but like if you're respecting the RP of it. Because I'm respecting your RP being a cop by letting you get back up. Like I could cuff you on the ground after I tackle you. I can tase you and cuff you under power. Like that's what I would train officers to do if I, if I wanted them to win. All the time. But because I'm respecting the roleplay of others and I want it to be fun for everybody. I let them stand back up. I don't cuff them as they're being shocked because that's no fun. Like that's sucks for them, right? So that's why we had like a little bit of issue like with the balancing going back and forth and, you know, like reaching out to people and it's been, it's been fairly decent now. Um, the other only, only other thing that I would say like, as far as your question is, like if you're in the jail cells, like the cops won. Like there's no, like, if they didn't search you and you want to shoot them, then like, by, by all means, whatever. But you're in the jail cells or you're in MRPD or you're here, you're there, like the cops have won this one. Just take the L, stop being a douchebag and move on. Like, and that's not directed at you happy or anybody in, in general. It's just, it's just me basically saying like. It's, it's a lot of fun. Like when I interact with Steve, like for the first minute, he'll be a total douchebag and it's a ton of fun. Because we're talking shit to each other. We're joking around. He like runs around the corner and hides and I get lost, can't find him. And then it's like, okay, you know, like it's been a minute and a half and then we get in the car and go to MRPD and I give him a ticket and he goes on his way. Like, so like that's a fun way for everybody to respect the RP and still have fun. Um, but not be afraid to essentially get arrested or. Get caught and lose in the end, but.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was going to mention as well. Like for the criminals. Um, if, if you're cuffed and in the back of a car. Um, some people will say, take the L right then and there. And if that's what you want to do, that's what you want to do. Uh, I would definitely say as soon as you cross that border at MRPD, then you're done.
Uh, we use Rockford Hills as well now. So there's in the garage of Rockford Hills.
Yeah, just any police station in general. Once the cops get you to the police station, you're kind of done. And I'm totally down for like, if you want your boys to like. Block the gates and on us have to like, like the criminals chase the cops to try to get their friend back. Like I could work that out, dude. Like I would have fun with that. But like being.
More content being created in that.
Yeah. And like, and like, that's something where it's planned enough to where if it's like, if the cops lose, like I'd be okay with that. Like if you. Hit me out and like, we're going to shoot out and, and like it, it's not, obviously it's not right away. Like I don't want you to be waiting for me at the gate when I come in, pop me in the head. Like that's dumb, but if you create content out of it, that's fun. But like any police station, like that's kind of where. Like the line should be drawn and you should kind of get the idea of like, okay, I've lost and like talk shit, sure, but like don't get out of your car and run and try to like run through the gate. Like unless there's some sort of RP there, like that we, you have going on. Like me and Steve, like he said, we won't necessarily plan it out, but we'll be like, hey. Like I'm a cop, I need something to do. You're a criminal, you need something to do. Let's do something together. And then we have that understanding of like, okay, if I catch him. He's going to let me, if he goes in handcuffs, even if he gets away from me and hides, he's coming back. Like so, we're just having fun. That's all it is.
Like, uh, I've got one little thing before asking one quick thing. Like I remember, uh, trying to show someone how to break into a house and then. You actually coming up and, uh, pointing guns and guns drawn on me. I was like, I lost this one. This sucks. Yeah, I, I, that one, I knew the take nail. Uh, but speaking of, uh, in police custody with. The prison script is, I'm assuming that's still messed up. That's still.
No, prison is back to work. People should already be going to jail and all that stuff. Cause it all, it's a new script, new system. Um, it actually like gives you like a tour when you first go. So you understand, uh, it tells you your time in the bottom left hand corner. Right now you can't escape. Uh, there's different little things you can do in the jail and things like that. You can pull table and go play pool and stuff. Uh, but once your time's up, it automatically books you out. Just kicks you out the front door. There you go. There's no finding the phone, third eyeing or waiting. It kicks you out. Um, then you walk back inside and go to the counter and you third eye the dude. I don't even third eye him, whatever. You just talk to him. And you're able to give your stuff back through him. Um, you also can do, we can put money on books. Like there's a whole new system. There's a whole video about it. But we are going to move on to the next person.
Uh, I, I've just got one question, uh, for cops. I know that not cops, but the police is, uh. For the sake of content, I know that, uh, you can actually just warp people from the jail to the prison. Uh, would it be easier or more of a pain to just actually do like a prison transfer from the?
Eventually we'll do that, but currently no, it's just the warping. Unless we have the officers on, we want to do a prison transport and try to do a breakout. Then yes, but we really don't have the numbers to do the breakout.
Okay, so that, that's a numbers issue, not a, okay, cool. That is all.
There'll be a lot of things that'll get solved with population. So.
Yeah, definitely. That's going to be fun.
Yeah, like ideally. We'll have the numbers eventually to do that every single time and it's up to you to decide whether or not you want to break something up or whatever.
DOC will come down and mass transport people and all that stuff. Alright, let's get the next person up here.
Hola.
Hello.
Hello.
Howdy. Um, so I had a question that was not exactly revolved around the things that we were talking about. Um, but I have a question about economy because we keep talking about it and I'd like. Um, I know that there used to be a thread for what the economy is supposed to be. It's like four hundred an hour roughly, right?
Yeah, there's, there's a thread.
Does that thread still exist?
It does.
Somewhere? Okay. Um, is that still the like current plan or are we revising that in the future?
I'm not too concerned about the economy. It's more or less getting scripts added and getting stuff content wise and figuring out things. Uh, the economy is probably going to come after the server is done and before we wipe and go into the live server. Um. We do got people that kind of went to school for like economy and stuff and know how to like kind of balance that stuff out. So it'd be easier to balance things out. Once we have everything added. So we know all the different. Um, variables on how to make money and what comes in and to play and stuff like that.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, I guess like with. That, um, a lot of like, because I've run into a couple like issues as well, whatever, with like different things that I've like. Um, reported and stuff like that. Um. We, because I've been doing mostly civilian, like the regular civilian jobs, right? Like testing, like mining and like. Um, et cetera, like figuring out the like new mining script and et cetera. Um. Are we, um. Do we have anyone who's working on? The possibility of like the general to, like tutorial of those.
Like how that all works? Um, now we have like, like a guide.
Yeah, because we have like the, all the guide things, like the areas for it, but they're not like filled out or anything.
Yes, uh, there is.
I didn't know who to actually ask about that.
Yeah, there's nobody currently working on those. Um, it's more or less it was me in the past, but like I'm busy with other dev work server stuff. So a lot of this. Guides and help information will come later on. Um, because I mean, it's just me and Saltra mostly doing a lot of the dev work. So. It's really bogging me down where I can't really do what I also kind of do. Um, because in the past, I kind of liked to do one thing and then move on to a different thing and kind of like rotate somewhat putting all my time in one thing. Because like the police liveries need to be done. I need to get that updated. But I, I'm just more or less just focusing on the, the server itself and getting it updated. Um, so I mean, if you want to do the guide stuff and kind of help with that, you can. I have no problem with that. Um.
Yeah, um, because I've, I've basically been like testing those and like. How much money you get from them or whatever, like testing the different things or whatever. Um. And, uh, I figured that I could at least like try to help with that, um, at least for the time being. Cause. I know that like businesses stuff is like eventually coming in and et cetera. So.
Yes.
I don't, I don't really have like a whole lot to do until we start getting more people and I'm like actually helping people into the server and then. Doing what my, like doing the business that I'm supposed to run eventually.
Um, mining is going to be a very special one. Cause like what you sell at the mine, that's was like bare bottom dollar prices. Um, you can make decent money getting minerals and stuff like that from the mine. Cause like everybody in the server, when they start crafting things are going to need those materials. So you'll be able to really negotiate. So it's kind of hard. That's where, like I said, it kind of, it's hard to balance out the economy on certain things because it's all going to be. RP based. You can charge five hundred dollars for something, but then somebody else will acknowledge it. I'll charge you two fifty.
Yeah, to, to add to that real quick, you know, like he was, like Punisher was saying with people going to be needing that stuff. Like once the, uh, mechanic shop stuff is fully up and going, like that's going to be a big thing is we're going to need a lot of materials. So like. Mechanic shops will be buying a lot of that stuff on top of any of the other, you know, scripts. So like that'll be. Kind of based off of, uh, you know, player pricing too. If people are, you know, not selling directly at the mine, it's going to be like, you know, how much. You know, who's willing to pay the most type of deal and stuff like that. So.
Yeah, like the, the basic street value and then whoever wants to counter something.
Yes. More, uh, anything else?
Um, ye- yes, uh, just one last question. Is there a rough estimate of like. When all of the business stuff will be kind of like.
Not, not currently, no.
Not currently, okay. That's fine. I just wanted to know if there was or not. But that's all I have.
Alright, thank you for your time.
Hi folks, how's it going? Uh, I'll make it nice and short. I, I wanted to touch on some of the subjects that everyone else has sort of bridged already anyway. Just around like, I feel like the RP at the moment. I, I mean, I know it's probably just from the reset and beta and stuff like that, but it's definitely, um. Slipped over the last few weeks. Um, but again, that's not really something we can do as a collective. It's more of a, just everyone trying to get on board with it. Um, and there's obviously not a huge amount of people here to try and hammer that point across. Um, the other thing I had along the civilian side of things is just, um, I've had a number of sort of briefs and complaints raised to me being. One of the few people that work in like a car dealership, so to say, a lot of people have been hassling me and haggling me to. Ask why certain cars and certain places aren't being stocked. Um, obviously. I can only do what I can do for the, the dealerships that I'm in. I am a manager in one of the dealerships, which I haven't stocked because. I'm not the business owner and I was only there to help out, but I know that there is one dealership that is currently quite lacking. And there are a lot of people sort of complaining that it's sort of hindering their RP, um, because they can't have those vehicles that they want, um, specifically. Uh, is there any way we can push people into just, because I know that there are people screaming out for civilian work and things like that. Is there any way we can try and push these people to try and at least, even if they don't want to pay like actively run their, their businesses? To like try and push.
Dealership are we talking about?
I'm talking about Sanders specifically, like, because they're the only people that stock bikes at the moment and people that want bikes can't have bikes. With them stocking that dealership. And like, I don't want to.
Trying to figure out what's going on with that. They might be locked out. I haven't heard, I don't know who runs it personally. The person that runs it. I tried to message and they haven't replied to me.
I sent a message to, I think the supposed owner, but today I saw that they were stocking or they were trying to stock.
There appears to be new vehicles in there, but it's only a couple.
Yeah, I, I, I saw it earlier today that they were taking pictures and stuff outside there and I said, oh, you finally stocking the dealership. And they said, oh no, just these. And because I'm, I manage there, I can see their sales. They just stock stuff and bought it themselves.
Yeah, if shit like this happens, it's going to be treated like your, uh. Your business got foreclosed on by the bank and it's going to go to somebody else unless you own the building itself, I think, but.
I mean, if you're not stocking it like, then you need to like, especially with dealerships. I mean, all the dealerships, we have bought the maps and stuff like that. So.
Yeah.
Really, it's not like somebody paid that. It's like they can be just easily taken away like. There's with the whole having. there's with the whole having the specialty dealerships where like each dealership kinda has their own special things, like, we gotta get somebody that's be active all the time and stop and stuff.
Yeah, I'll say too on the Sander stuff, like, I personally set the log, so like, the, everybody that is involved and whoever like is running that has access to it and it should be open all the time. So if it's not stocked, it's either because they're not on or they're just, you know, not stocking it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely as like a general rule to anybody who owns a business, especially dealership, since cars are kind of the main thing of GTA. Um, like, there's nothing wrong with having life stuff go on where you're not gonna be around, but at least let somebody know. That way, that can be dealt with.
Yeah, we can make plans so that your business is running in your absence. We've done that before for people.
Yeah, that, that's where my main concern is. Like, obviously, uh, future pipe dream down the track, I, I feel like dealership's done once the population's bigger, should keep things in stock, but don't place the ads, so we can drive more RP around those businesses. In the meantime, while the server population's low, then we just need to do our best to make sure that those, uh, the stock is there for people to purchase and, and use an RP as they like. Uh, other than that, I think everyone else has touched on uh things that I wanna sort of touch on. Um, I may be to step away. Thanks, guys.
Alright, thank you. Alright.
Hi, guys. Um, me again. So last, last thing, um, I forgot to bring up earlier is one of the things that I personally feel like, I know originally from talking to people, it sounded like the vehicles weren't compressed down all the way and having like a lot of vehicles out can cause a lot of strain on the server. Um, but as that gets situated, is there plans to uh keep player vehicles out longer than the fifteen minutes?
Uh, is that Punisher's question or Charles?
Wait, what was that?
Uh, I don't know anything about any of that, so it's a Punisher question.
Yeah, so like the vehicles, uh, like they despawn after a while, right? If you leave your vehicle out somewhere, it just disappears into nowhere land.
Yeah, that's currently a script issue that it's not gonna be a thing. Like, I want vehicles to stay on the map, like the, the optimization stuff with not being like compressed is not really like an issue that we'll have an issue with, with the low pop we have, but eventually when we have like a hundred plus people in there, yes, vehicles are not be compressed down. Currently have nobody in the server that knows how to compress them down and make them work. Uh, I know I can go onto fiber and like find ten different Indian people that know how to fix it. Um, but those, those are scams. Uh, so like eventually, like, I'm gonna do that, but it's just, it's not a major issue right now. Um, the vehicle should be staying longer, but it's just a script issue and I haven't added like a different script or went and messed with it.
Okay, yeah, cuz I know like in our old city, like if somebody would leave, you know, a gun in a car and then fly out for the night, we would just, you know, or even if they were in city, we would lockpick their car and then they'd have like a live ping if you stole their car. Uh, until you remove like a tracking device at like a designated chop shop. Now, doesn't have to be anything like that, but if people are leaving their cars out and whatnot, it would be nice to uh
Now, our key script has a vehicle alarm system, has like four levels. Uh, we don't have like the items where people will buy them. But like each level does like a different like GPS ping type of thing. Uh, it's just not currently fully there, but if vehicles aren't staying on the map, that's, this is a current script issue that.
My vehicle stayed on the map today, but it no longer was my vehicle. So I was able to park a vehicle and it stayed there for, you know, say forty-five minutes, came back and ended up was uh, ended up, I couldn't start it with my keys. I had to hotwire it and then it wouldn't let me store it, but then it had my vehicle in a garage.
What you're saying is you're a dirty criminal.
No, no, I just stole my own vehicle, you know?
Well, clear excuse, I'm sure Walker is it all the time.
Yeah, that's what I would say.
No, 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 officer, you don't understand.
Grandma gave me the wrong key to her car.
My car with the screwdriver and hammer.
Yeah, it's my senile grandma's car.
She doesn't remember, she gave it to me.
Yeah.
Well, for sure, guys. Um, that, that was my, my last bit of input because I do enjoy like that type RP, like everybody was saying, just player to player and whatnot, so. Um.
I know there was, uh, I know it was mentioned like a long time ago. I don't know if it's still the plan. Um, but it was mentioned where there's gonna be a way that the cars, like even when you log out, um, aren't going to hop away and that was gonna create a type of, you know, people boosting other players' cars. I don't, I don't know if that's still a thing, if.
I, I want it to be a thing still, it's just getting back to that point.
Yeah, those rookies are going to love that.
Especially with uh housing scripts, you know, parking your car in a garage gives a little bit more of a realism, you know, stuff like that. Um, and then obviously, if you just leave your car out and log off for the night, who knows what's gonna happen to it, sort of thing, so.
Yeah, cuz I mean, in our old city, we, we could leave our car and it would stay out until tsunami. Tsunami, you would just wipe the slate clean and it'd just be, you know, back, back in the garage until then, right? So, but awesome. I'm excited. I hope uh to see a lot of growth and I think that will fix a lot of things and make the RP a lot more fun for a lot of us, so.
Alright, uh, if there's nobody else, we'll wrap this up and we will see you guys on the next uh town hall meeting. Um, like I said, salty chat set up on the dev server, so if you wanna try that out, message me, I'll kinda help you walk through it or you can watch the video sort of thing, but the, the better guide for how to use the salty chat will be set up at some point as well, so we can kinda get people used to that system. Take it easy, everybody. Thanks for coming.
Light it up.
I love you.